To get started, welcome. I'm glad we are continuing our commitment to meet on a regular basis. I would like to thank all of you for coming today. Unfortunately, as you're aware, we have been handed unfunded mandates with Blueprint. In addition, we are also required to complete a career ladder by July 1st. The career ladder we have developed and the CCA negotiated agreement go hand in hand. And I will say a lot of counties are doing that at this time. The career ladder we have, okay, we have developed. We need to complete both of these at the same time. School systems in surrounding counties are doing the exact same thing. Once we vote and pass the negotiated agreement with CCEA, I will personally be presenting each commissioner with an individual copy. So that means I'll be over tomorrow morning. What time are you all going to be there?
Nine o'clock.
I'll be there before that because I have them in my hand. I have them. And each of you, and we want to be totally transparent. I would also like to thank you out there are no additional positions in this budget. And we are approximately cutting 66 positions that represent the end of the federal grants. At this point, I would like to turn things over to our superintendent, Dr. McCabe.
Good afternoon. I'd like to just echo what President Herbert said and just thank you for the opportunity to meet again, to discuss our current issues, including where we are with the impact of Blueprint. You know, and I'm just going to speak from the heart for a minute here. As far as this budget season goes, I think we've not wavered since the beginning, since January, when we really started in earnest talking about what our needs would be and why. But Blueprint withstanding for a minute, I believe we really are at a significant crossroads in this county. And the question that has to be answered at this point is, do we wish to remain a leader in this state as far as student outcomes or not? And what this budget really represents is an opportunity for us to position our teachers' salaries in such a way that we can recruit and retain qualified professionals after years and years of falling behind our surrounding districts. So not only is raising teacher salaries a large part of the blueprint that we talk about all the time, but it's also the right and necessary thing to do in order to ensure that our students have competent instructors in front of them in the classroom. And I don't believe we can continue to hold the same expectations for the kind of education our students receive and not be able or willing to pay for it. It just comes hand in hand. And few people argue against the notion of giving our teachers a fair raise, but it's the total cost of such raises that causes sticker shock for everybody. And I completely understand that. And that, but that's why at this point, we're in a position where there's an over $9,000 gap between our average teacher salary and those in surrounding districts. So I just ask you, I implore you to support us, not just in being compliant with Blueprint because it's the law, but because we do want to rightly serve the children in our county. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Neal. We have slides presented, most of those we've gone through at our agency hearing. So we don't plan to go through each slide one at a time like we did at the hearing, but basically summarize what the issue is and what that discussion has been. Mr. O'Neal?
Thank you, Dr. McCabe. And good afternoon. What we were hoping to do was try to be responsive to the questions that Roberta sent over, but also just be free to answer any questions you have. Some of your, some of your questions that get into specifically what it means to comply with the blueprint and what happens, I'll defer those to Mr. Omeley when we finish talking about the budgetary numbers and he, he can address some of that. I think a couple of your questions that we heard or received had to do with [inaudible] you provide and what would it be spent on and what portion of that would be salary. And again, as Dr. McCabe said, this isn't new. What's on the screen is not new information for you. This is identical to the, to what we shared at the agency hearing on March 26th. But as a frame of reference, we thought it would be nice to be able to look back and forth at the numbers. And so there's the total revenue numbers planned into the FY '25 request. And the 17.9 million from you would be inclusive of the 7.1 in your plan and the 10.9 additional that, that's in the Board of Ed's request. The 7.8 from the state, there's still a little bit of washing out to do from the General Assembly, but that number's been reflecting the unrestricted portion of state funding or the, what we usually might call the foundation. That didn't change by end of session. There was some discussion, well, not some discussion, there was at least one supplemental budget released by the governor. Ted and I had actually had some conversation about that, did my best to try to research that. What I can tell you for sure, sitting here, is it doesn't touch the foundation. So that doesn't change the 7.8. It does look like it adjusted [inaudible] of loss. And when I say a little bit, I mean a few thousand dollars on, on the grand total of, you know, somewhere around 170 million. So a little loss in comp ed money from the state. A little loss in special ed, I believe, from the state, which doesn't help our cause. And an increase for everybody in pre-K, but that pre-K money, we believe, and still pending some additional guidance, that additional pre-K money for us and everyone is geared towards the non-public providers, the private, I'm sorry, the private providers, the private partnership group. So that's not money that's going to change this discussion, but I did want to share that. So the 7.8 is roughly the same. And then somewhere in here, we have an expenditure slide here. And this, this hopefully will be helpful to explain, you know, what, what we would do. The Board of Ed's flexibility really is not so much in the first line. We'll always refine those inflationary numbers as we get closer and closer to closing out the budget, but those are the kind of, those, what inflationary impacts mean to us are the same conversations that I hear you having consistently as you ponder your own county expenditures and your own, the money on which you operate, the county government and another agency. So that 6.9 comes down to things like increases in employee healthcare and retiree healthcare, increases in other forms of insurances, whether that's workers' compensation, liability, property insurances. There's, there's a decent amount, not at those same levels as the areas I just mentioned, but a decent amount programmed in for anticipated utility costs that we expect to see increase this year. So it's things like that. And again, we refine those numbers until we close out a budget, but that's, you know, those are bills that have to be paid, just like, just like when you talk about the same things. Employee negotiations, what you see there at a number of 19.2 million is the total increase planned in the FY '25 budget for all of Carroll County Public Schools employees. So we have had existing collective bargain, we have five unions and we've had existing collective bargaining agreements with three of those five units this year, and they continue for three years. So those agreements have been in place the year we're finishing and the next two years. That's our ASME unit, our CASE unit, and our Food Services Association. So sort of our, what the union calls our educational support professionals, or you might call them our support staff. So those agreements have been locked in at step in 5% or the value thereof for each of those three years. And this year, we had open our teachers' agreement and our agreement with our A&amp;S unit, which is an acronym called APSASCO. And those are the two bargaining units of the five that are directly impacted by the career ladder, the blueprint requirements of a career ladder, most especially the teachers, but also the A&amp;S unit. So, you know, that's the big ticket item. That's, that's always been the big ticket item long before there was a blueprint, and that will always be the big ticket item after there's a blueprint. And there's different ways you can look at it. We're very close to being able to talk completely openly about the negotiated agreements. But, you know, we have, we talked about this at the agency hearing, we have 3,500 employees and, and most of them are teachers, 2,200 of them are teachers or related, like guidance, counselors, media specialists, et cetera. Their average salary, we talked about that, is in the $70,000. Or if you pick apart our major categories and look at what are the salary lines for, for teachers in category two, category 13, which is special ed, it's, it's, it's somewhere, just for classroom, without getting into the related providers, it's somewhere in the 160 million. I'd say 165 is a good place to work from for classroom folks. So when you start putting numbers that are competitive or numbers that are, you know, being granted in surrounding counties with whom we compete, or even in other sectors of public service here or nearby, you get into, you get into tens of millions of dollars pretty quickly. And, and that's still true today, just like it's been for the last decade. I would offer that Blueprint does, in the future especially, put more pressure on that. There's, you know, there's, there's add-ons for national board certification, there's add-ons to be lead and distinguished teachers. We've accomplished a career ladder that puts that structure in place, but we have very few individuals on those sections of the career ladders yet. That absolutely will grow over time, and it's a little bit hard to forecast exactly how many teachers, say, next year will achieve national board and the year after that. But the early data tells us two things. We're starting from a much lower base there than most other, many other counties, especially the ones with whom we compete. And it's not, you don't just sign up and say, I want to be national board and then get to be it. You have to go through a multi-year process. And so people go through this, this, this PDS, this PDS process of becoming national board, and they take the assessments in a certain year, and not 100% of them pass. So there is future pressure. There's no doubt about that, but not much of that pressure is built in here. The, the blueprint specific items in this budget, I think largely are on the second line there, blueprint requirements. And we talked about this at the agency hearing. That's all about us chasing the dual enrollment college and career-ready number with Carroll Community College. So we've increased that number in each of the last two budget cycles, and our actuals are telling us in each of the last two budget cycles, including right now with the spring bill from Carroll Community, that the number we picked wasn't high enough. And this is what we projected. Basically, this is capturing actuals this year. We were, we were 700,000 below what actuals are turning out to be. We're not trying to over-budget that. We're just trying to chase it until we achieve a baseline, I guess is how we're, how we're approaching it. As far as the, the other blueprint impact here, I would say if you, if you talk about salary structure in terms of the overall compensation package that the superintendent mentioned last time, or that we were sort of trying to target for all of those units of the value of step in 5%, mathematically, it works out to, in my mind at least, and I guess there's nuances that people could debate, but in my mind, there's about 1.5 or 1.6 million more attached to that CCA structure than just the base raise would equate to in terms of a 24-based accounting with that amount attached to it. The base scale, and I know Mrs. Herbert says she's going to bring over the, the ratification when she can, I, I would say we probably should add the 20, the current fiscal year salary scale to that as well, so that they have a back and forth to look at. I can do that. The base schedule, so the non-career ladder parts, and maybe this, I saw Commissioner Kyler have a question like this on the fourth. The most a teacher in Carroll County makes today at the highest placement on the scale would be $100,304. That's, that's the maximum salary.
I never got there.
Marcia never got there. If you, if you increase $100,304 by 5%, just no blueprint involved, just what is that number with 5%? That's 105,319, 20. The scale, the base scale that's part of our, hopefully to be ratified, career ladder moves that number, I should have opened that page probably, moves that number to 105,5. So 105,319 versus 105,5. And those little nuances are more of a function of smoothing out the intervals on the scale so that they were all standard amounts on a lane. So the base is changing where we need it to change because we're going after the 60,000 requirement. And I think the superintendent talked at length about that at the agency hearing, so I don't want to, you know, I don't want to go back over all of that information. But like similar things that I've heard you saying, or maybe other county agencies, we're not hiring well, and we try not to highlight that publicly. We've tried to stay away from that publicly. But we're walking around today and on any given day with teacher vacancies, which has never been a reality in Carroll County. That's never been, until the pandemic, something we dealt with. So we have classrooms filled with long-term subs in a few cases, and then we have classrooms filled with an increasingly higher amount of what we call conditionally certified, or folks who are not yet fully professionally licensed. They have a degree, but they still have to work on some things for their certification. And our number's favorable to other counties. There's no doubt about that, and it always has been, but it's growing at a rate that we're not, we don't believe, I think I can speak for the superintendent here, we just don't believe we're structurally prepared to handle. She mentioned to you before, we've benefited from hiring usually whoever picked up the phone when we called on the first, second, or maybe third call. And now we call several times before somebody says, yes, in some cases, I'd like to teach in Carroll. And because of that history and our stability, we have not had the same kind of what other counties call a teacher induction, a new teacher orientation and training program. And we find ourselves all of a sudden with a, with a drastic need for that. So anything we can do to compete in the hiring realm, hopefully, is getting us more and more prepared folks.
And Mr. O'Neal, I would just add to that. In the last few weeks, we've begun to interview candidates for next school year for teaching positions. And we've been offering many of those candidates open contracts. And what that means is, you know, we agree to hire you for the upcoming school year, you agree to work for us, you may not find out exactly what school you're going to be in until later in the spring. And we've gotten very few people accept our open contract, and we've never been in that situation before. So it's, it's not tenable for the future.
And we, at one time, and there was, by the way, for what it's worth, there was significant Board of Ed level discussion about whether this approach was the correct approach or made sense or not, or, you know, should it be timed out differently? Could it be successfully timed out differently? And there's merit to that conversation, don't get me wrong. We were hopeful that we could also get a little bit ahead of other counties and what we're learning, and I'm not at liberty to talk about this publicly unless you've seen a ratification published in another county, but what we're learning is there were already counties above 60,000 before the blueprint. Many other counties with whom we would consider ourselves to be competitive are reaching the same place. So it, you know, it's still a positive to be able to compete, but it's not a, you know, kind of a leg ahead. A different way that we at least look at it is, you know, when, when Mr. Kyler asked me to jog across the street a year ago and forecast how much might something cost going forward on this part of the blueprint, it just
How did you do jogging?
Not too well. And I had a doctor's appointment yesterday, I should tell you about. I'm no Steve Guthrie.
And he didn't jump across the table. That's a good thing.
Yeah. I had a alarming doctor's visit yesterday where they told me how much I weighed. It wasn't great. You know it, but you don't need to hear it, you know? So, and admittedly, that was an early forecast, but that was taking where the scale sat today and by a percentage where it needed to go to get to the ultimate blueprint salary requirement, career ladder and all. But if I'm a union, so now I'm about to do something like worse than saying, I'll speak for the superintendent, I'm going to speak what I, what I believe might be sort of a collective bargaining mentality from the association. They were willing through this agreement to kind of give up that quest. I'm, I'm sure they would tell you that they, and their initial proposals would reflect that they would want the same exact increase on an interval by interval or step by step basis all the way up and down the scale. And so that would have been somewhere around 15 and a half percent, I think, to get from beginning to full end. This is getting us there for half of that, and they're willing to take that on. And I guess that I would have to then conclude that they see the bigger picture as well. They see the empty classrooms or the newer colleagues who need support and, and are willing to say, this is a fair settlement and it accomplishes what needs to be accomplished so, so this thing can move forward and that part of blueprint can be put aside and we can worry about and analyze the cost of the impacts into the future. I guess is sort of a big picture view of how I've, how I've been processing it as well. So that's, you know, I could say whatever else you, you want, that I'll tell you what I can or can't say on salary, but that's how that breaks out. Special ed is an area that we have
John, I apologize. Before you, before you go on to the next, you had said, and correct me if I'm wrong, that not until the pandemic did you have any serious issues with teacher shortages?
Correct.
So the student population, I guess, kind, would, would have gone down during the pandemic, and that's rebounded, correct?
Correct.
But the teachers have not rebounded. Now, is it, is it, not in the, not in the same way that the students have, not at the same rate? So I guess the question is, what was it, was it specifically the pandemic or was it something in relation to the pandemic that kept the teachers away? Is it, is it specifically the pay that the pandemic was kind of like the straw that made everybody say, okay, this is not worth it anymore?
I think it's, I think with most things, Commissioner, it's always more than one thing. I think it's, it's all of those things. What we didn't see in the first year of the pandemic was a massive retirement. We did not. And I guess I would say, really, in any given year, pandemic or beyond, we didn't necessarily see that one year, just that one blip where we had triple the number of teacher retirements we would normally expect. But what we did start seeing, and it continues, is people retiring, historically, people retired July 1st, and there's reasons for that. It's the fiscal year, it's, it matters when you're pension COLA over time, there's lots of reasons for that. What we began seeing in the second year of the pandemic and out is, most of our retirements will come in July, and the second most will come at the calendar year break. But we have started seeing people retiring throughout the year. And I don't know if it's, I'm not, you know, this is dangerous. I'm not a psychologist and I don't have any data of interviews to support this, but I wonder if part of it is you get through that, that first push of the pandemic and the world didn't end and fiscally you're better than you thought you might be a year later and all of those things, and you say, okay, now, now it's time for me to go. But we've seen a continuation of that, and we've seen, and I don't think this is just a Carroll problem either, to be fair. We've seen not as many people entering the teaching profession, and that was pre-pandemic, and that unfortunately is no better if not worse. And that's sort of the state's burden to take up that, partially the state's burden to take up that question promotion. And the theory of the blueprint is you set a decent starting salary and a good career plan, and that takes care of it, but not yet.
I'm sorry. So you'd mentioned the retirements, right? So is it, is it, what is the average age for a teacher to retire in Carroll County? Do you know?
I don't know the average age, but it's more than 30 years in, so, you know, mid-50s, I would suspect is the average age, because you can retire after 30 in the, in the Maryland pension system.
Gotcha. So is it, so if I were, for example, if I was a teacher and I retired, could I go teach somewhere else or am I done at that point if I retire? What I'm trying to get at is if somebody retires, say, in September, do they go teach somewhere else in October?
You can within certain earnings limitations in the pension system. You can't fully double dip. You can also come back here and teach within certain limitations, and we've done that. We've hired more retired, rehired retirees than we've ever hired, anything to fill the gaps. Those folks are hired on an annual basis. They're not, they don't gain the full benefits of the collective bargaining agreement. There's some, some restrictions. So retirements is one part of it. Another part is what our director of HR, Mr. Ernesto Diaz, refers to me as the churning. And so this, again, this has been true in a much more limited fashion prior to the pandemic in certain very hard-to-fill critical shortage areas. Special education is the one that's the easiest to talk about. It's been that way for some time, but sciences, mathematics, other kinds of critical shortage areas. When you have to hire somebody who is not necessarily fully prepared to teach, that's a hard transition in your, in your life. Even if, even if you want to do it in your heart and soul, that's your mission, being put in that setting is not what most people are prepared to be up for. I always tell Nick, when you need subs, you should put me in last, because that would be a very hard transition for me, but also for the children I'm supposed to be helping. And so you get folks who just don't make it. They might make it a year, they might make it half a year, they might not make it half a year, and you have to, you have to refill that. And so that's why Ernesto refers to that as the churning. And it's, it's very true in certain teaching positions, it's very true in other support positions, particularly in special ed. But we're seeing it across the board in different teaching environments, not just, not just special ed or the critical shortage areas, where we're hiring folks who aren't fully prepared to enter that classroom. Fully trained teachers will tell you, it's not an easy transition from being prepared in college to walking in that door and teaching for 180 days. But it's, it's different when that, when you haven't even had that level of preparation. And so that's, that's the thing about not having an induction program and these other needs that the superintendent has been sharing.
And I would just add to that by saying, what we're hearing from, from teachers is, number one, what, what Mr. O'Neal said, this is a tough job. It's not an easy job, and it's not a job you can do from home. And there's a lot of that out there now that people can do with an education degree. Further, our students are much more complex. They come to us with more needs than they did even five years ago. So it isn't like a teacher can just go into the classroom and focus on teaching the curriculum. They have to be able to meet the needs of diverse and complex students. And then thirdly, it's the salary. You know, people are smart. They're going to go find the work that they can find for a salary they can live with and a job that they can have a good work-life balance in. And as anybody knows, teaching is not a job that you can have a great work-life balance in. And so I think this is a societal issue. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, society has changed in general, and teaching is not a profession that is often respected as it should be anymore. And that plays itself out in, in the way in which we're supported, in the conversation
to me as the churning. And so this, again, this has been true in a much more limited fashion prior to the pandemic in certain very hard to fill critical shortage areas. Special education is the one that's the easiest to talk about. That's, it's been that way for some time. But sciences, mathematics, other kinds of critical shortage areas. When you have to hire somebody who is not necessarily fully prepared to teach, that's a hard transition in your in your life. Even if even if you want to do it in your heart and soul, that's your mission, being put in that setting is not what most people are prepared to be up for. I always tell Nick, when you need subs, you should put me in last, because that would be a very hard transition for me, but also for the children I'm supposed to be helping. And so you get folks who just don't make it. They might make it a year. They might make it half a year. They might not make it half a year. And you have to, you have to refill that. And so that's why Ernesto refers to that as the churning. And it's, it's very true in certain teaching positions. It's very true in other support positions, particularly in special ed. But we're seeing it across the board in different teaching environments, not just, not just special ed or the critical shortage areas, where we're hiring folks who aren't fully prepared to enter that classroom. Fully trained teachers will tell you, it's not an easy transition from being prepared in college to walking in that door and teaching for one hundred and eighty days. But it's, it's different when that, when you haven't even had that level of preparation. And so that's the, that's the thing about not having an induction program and these other needs that the superintendent has been sharing.
And I would just add to that by saying, what we're hearing from from teachers is, number one, what what Mr. O'Neill said, this is a tough job. It's not an easy job. And it's not a job you can do from home. And there's a lot of that out there now that people can do with an education degree. Further, our students are much more complex. They come to us with more needs than they did even five years ago. So it isn't like a teacher can just go into the classroom and focus on teaching the curriculum. They have to be able to meet the needs of diverse and complex students. And then, thirdly, it's the salary. You know, people are smart. They're going to go find the work that they can find for a salary they can live with and a job that they can have a good work-life balance in. And as anybody knows, teaching is not a job that you can have a great work-life balance in. And so I think this is a societal issue. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, society has changed in general, and teaching is not a profession that is often respected as it should be anymore. And that plays itself out in in the way in which we're supported, in the conversations that happen between parents and teachers. And I think that it makes, it makes the job harder for for those who are here and people who are determining whether they're going to go into education or not hear about this. It's all over social media. It's all over the news. So it's, it's becoming tough.
Go ahead.
I was just going to add before Dr. McCabe started, that again, as, you know, we're looking at the combination of situations and reasons why, you know, people are leaving the profession. Again, it's, another part of it is, as you mentioned, Dr. McCabe, it's the behavior of the students. We just had a work session recently on that. And in addition to having a work session, I mean, there are teachers throughout who just share situations that, you know, it's, it's almost hard to comprehend that people in the profession are dealing with some of the behavior that they're dealing with now. So again, it's very challenging. And again, we certainly know it's very rewarding as well. But, you know, for the ones who know that there could possibly be another type life outside of the education system, you know, sometimes I think they're just choosing those options rather than staying in a situation such as what we have now. And I know there was a period of time in Carroll County when we did have a strong induction program. I mean, we had a staff pretty much devoted to, you know, our, our teachers and our beginning teachers, making sure that they were ready to be that, that teacher for the needs of the students, all students in their classrooms. And, you know, when those, when that department sort of dismantled and the help that was provided for teachers taken away, again, I think it's just made a huge, huge difference.
And that was a budget issue.
I attended UMBC's senior presentations today for their final grades, and it was in the ballroom there at their school. And I went to the poster presentations, mostly math and science. I did go talk to the girls and guys that did education presentations. We cannot compete with their salaries. Trust me. I talked to some, and wow, not interested. And, you know, that was just, just a couple hours ago. And there were a lot of students there. I talked to professors, and it was a wonderful event. But not many going into education. It was minimal. So.
And a lot of that has to do with the student loans that they have, the amount of course inflation, everything with the cost of living. They're going to go where the money is. And that's, that's an unfortunate part. I mean, we want to, I believe Sheriff Dewey said it best when, you know, we want to keep our law enforcement here in the county and to protect our citizens. And much of that law enforcement comes through our school system before they're adults and they they go into the law enforcement. So I think it's, it's important that, you know, we try to keep those of Carroll County in Carroll County. To me, that's, that's something that's important to have here.
And, you know, we, we do conduct exit surveys. We don't get a great response rate and historically have not. And it's, we don't have the resources to really try to track people down. Anecdotally, there are any number of reasons why people chose to leave during or after the pandemic. And some of those reasons were just shared. And another one that wasn't, but I think just anecdotally was fairly repetitive, was something changed in their life, in their, in their family, perhaps, when they just needed to take care of, of an elderly parent or a child or something like that. So it, you know, the whole, it adds up, but it's a number of moving parts. Try to, try to wrap up the budget in some of your discussion we watched. So the other areas on here, we talked about what the blueprint requirements is. That's chasing the dual enrollment until we get there. There was some legislative help there this year, and we're very, very actively engaged in, in discussions with the college on, on this question. Transportation, we reimburse the contractors with a formula for the service they provide. Historically, we kept that number under inflation. We made some improvements to that formula three or four years ago. And since then, we've been parsing it out. That's really a part of inflation. That is an area where we will go to fund balance if needed, if fuel costs are out of hand in a given year or more than anticipated. So then that leaves special ed and technology. And I would say that these two areas of our budget, along with maintenance, are historically areas where we've always worked from a structural deficit. In special ed, amazingly, the first two or three years of phasing in towards the blueprint, when there was sort of like that early pre blueprint blueprint law, there were grants and aid for special ed that kind of brought a solvent for a while. And so that was the first time we saw some real relief here. The two million you see on the screen reflects three major areas. And they are, from my memory, but I have notes here. They are increasing costs for, for due process. So when parents have a concern or complaint, they can file for a legal process to review their student services or placements. Those costs have gone up in recent years. Our costs for contracted services have gone up significantly in recent years. And those would be folks like, positions like speech language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, et cetera, those related services. If we can't hire folks ourselves and make them our employees, so this is sort of a, you know, one hand or the other, we, Nick still has to provide those services legally. We can't say, oh, we tried to hire a speech path, but we didn't. So your kid doesn't get that service. We have to come up with it. And so he has to turn to contracted services. Those numbers have, have inflated along with all of those service numbers. And then we have certain positions that provide one-to-one assistance to a student or close student support that we call, what do we call them? Student, student support assistance. Those numbers have climbed over the years as, as students' needs have become more and more complex and the service hours needed are more and more involved. But that number, except for the past couple of years, honestly, thanks to the blueprint phase in, has always been a number we've chased like this. And technology has always been a number we chased, except that it became a much higher number after the pandemic, because during the pandemic, there was no option other than for periods of time, virtual instruction. There was ESAR money from the, from the federal government that we used to buy a ton of student devices. And we were already carrying a deficit to replace the devices we had before the pandemic. And we added a one-to-one initiative for every student in the school system. And so the number you see on the screen, a little bit of that is, well, five hundred thousand of that would be the deficit I think I've been carrying. Like, we, we were always about five hundred short or more to replace the existing devices we had, excuse me, as they came out of warranty in a given summer. So some of that's residual. Another three point five million reflects the, I don't know if Gary Davis is in the back, roughly twenty thousand laptops we purchased during the, with the ESAR money. So there was money made available to buy them, and that's great. But the warranty is only for so long, and then they have to be replaced. And also, kids take them home, and sometimes they get damaged more quickly, part of it as well. So five hundred thousand of that number is, is the break-fix warranty support that that's basically an actual now. We know how much we're spending to fix them every year. So those are all the numbers. It may be a little more discussion than we had last time. And I guess sort of maybe, I heard Commissioner Rothstein talking about, well, where could the board bridge if the board wanted to? I remember Commissioner Garen asking about fund balance and that sort of thing. And we wanted to, you know, offer some discussion on those two things. Fund balance existed.
If I can
Sure.
Kind of comment a couple things. One is, because I appreciate whoever said rebound from the budget. It was brought up. And, you know, you can only rebound so much when you have budget deficits. And the expectation is to maintain the services that you were doing while the budget was at X, and now it's at a letter below X, but the services remain. And now, it's well below X, you know, and you're still, we still have an incredible school system, so the services still remain. You're unable to get the teachers like you described. The, so obviously, that's, you know, the, the big elephant is how do you retain the services that we so deservingly, you know, expect and have had over the many years here in Carroll County? If you're not able to have the amount of money needed to do that. It's not my position, nor I believe any of my colleagues, to say that you don't know your requirements. That's your position. That was Commissioner Kyler when he was on that side. And I would never question that. So the money that is put into the budget right now, that's seven point one million dollars. That's, which is the MOE plus. And we put it in. And you're right, Dr. McCabe, you have not wavered off of your messaging from day one with that ten point eight million. So when you came to us, you collectively saying seventeen point nine million, I want to make sure that was a unified message. And I believe it was. It was voted on from you, five oh, coming to us, saying this is what the requirement is for ten point eight million. Now, knowing that, how do we get to ten point eight million through different ways, fund balance and other things? That's kind of where I think we should, I think, we should start having that discussion. Because if not, we're not going to get there. You know, we put a placeholder, and you, I know you're watching, I'm silly to think you're not, the discussions we're having. And we put a placeholder of six million dollars in place, but that still leaves us, our county, with a twelve-plus million dollar deficit. So if you think, well, we could put seven million, well, that'll leave us with a thirteen-plus million dollar deficit. So something's got to give somewhere. And there's got to be a balance.
Yeah.
And the last thing I'll say, the reason I proposed the six million was looking at your fund balance and how you could use that, as well as other things, you know, to get us to as close to what you unified and collectively said is ten point eight. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And, and, and we also know that the, the funding that we're getting from the state is, is very low for this coming school year in comparison to what it will be in the years after. So because of that difference, and you'll see highlighted, the one hundred forty-seven dollars from the state, you'll see that the next FY twenty-six, we're up again to four thirty-seven from three thirty-two in FY twenty-four. So this is a situation where we feel like some of this will be taken care of by that increased funding. And it also sets up a situation where there are some situations where we can use some fund balance to get us through to bridge until next year.
Okay.
And I think, you know, I appreciate Dr. McCabe bringing this up. Part of what's at play here is this. And no one can explain it. And you haven't asked us, and I appreciate that. I don't know how they came up with
You're saying Ted can explain it?
Well, maybe Ted can, or maybe Dr.
Just throw it out there.
I don't know why they picked the year in the blueprint when a lot of things were due to be the smallest increase in their targeted per pupil. But they did. But if you look at the future increases, those are year-over-year increases on the targeted per pupil. And so that's, you know, just loosely, we would expect about three times more revenue from the state next year and that, you know, on the base. So that's, that's great. But because this year's the lowest in the whole cycle, I think there's pressure here, when you sequence that up with certain things that come due, that otherwise wouldn't be there. Now, you know, would the number be zero or, or something short of ten point eight in a different year? I don't know. But it would certainly be less than ten point eight. And it might just be, your plan was lovely. Thank you. But that, that last slide isn't helping us. And so in some ways, it's almost a bridge budget for us outright, because we know when we get, when we get to twenty-six, the state is, is at a higher level than they've been in some time. And that plays into the foundation as well as the other areas.
John, can, can you remind us, I mean, that's not just a Carroll County phenomenon, right?
No, no.
That's across the whole state, right?
Those, that's
That shortfall in twenty twenty-five.
These are the, and this is, I guess, there's the good and the bad of, of everything, including the blueprint. So the, the good, at least in, in my mind, is, in, in historical times, after the first few ramp-up years of Thornton, the previous formula, we never really knew what our increase from the state would be. We had to make reasonable guesses, and we did. I mean, we did a reasonable job at making those educated guesses. But it was just, there'll be an inflationary factor, and it could be here, it could be there, and it's somewhere in that range. And so Chris and I historically would have to try to sort out, what do we think's the right thing to say? Now, under the blueprint, some good is that we know they have hardcoded all of the numbers into the law for ten years. Now, could the General Assembly change those numbers? Sure. It's just like they made the law. They can revise the law. But that's a better place at trying to judge where state revenue's going than we've ever, ever been. The only thing we don't know for sure are our populations until we get to September thirty and ten thirty-one of each year. But we have a general sense of where our populations are trending. So we can forecast state revenue in a, in a much more precise way than we ever could. Why they picked twenty-five to make it the smallest increase at the state level, I don't know. But I know it's very, very unhelpful. It would have been nice to pick the smallest year when some of your more rigorous lifts under the blueprint were in the rearview mirror. But they didn't.
I would like, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, do you think that's the driver? I mean, we're hearing, you know, anecdotally, from other counties around the state as well, you know, that they're having equal budget issues, and they're looking to lay off hundreds of teachers, right? Like, as part of their process? Do you think this, that one number is, is a significant driver?
I think it's a significant driver. I think, and we haven't talked about it locally. We mentioned it with you and with the commissioners. The other thing is, people did different things with their federal ESAR money. We bought a lot of laptops for kids. We, we also did create some positions. We created sixty, some, sixty-six, maybe, sixty-six FTE with the ESAR money to sort of get through the, the pandemic. As enrollments went down, they fluctuated, though. And so we would see certain classrooms in the next year, it'd be like, where did those kids come from? And so we, we earmarked some classroom-specific positions and some support positions and some positions specifically to support digital learning or virtual learning at home. Those are gone from our budget. They're, they're, they, they were eliminated before the budget got to the Board of Ed, even let alone coming across the street to you. So we had about five, I think, five point one, five point two million in eliminated FTE between ESAR funding and something called the State Pass Through Grant, the Maryland Leeds Grant. And some of those positions are, some of those are teacher mentors, Dr. Dorsey. So those are the kind of roles that help with induction. But Dr. Dr. McCabe had to make some choices early, too. And, and those were some of the choices made. So that number doesn't help. Next year, it looks a lot better in some ways, in some ways, returning to you to bridge the gap to get there. There's no doubt about that. But the, and, and again, sometimes I'm in a weird spot where I'm speaking, and, and nobody voted for me, and I understand that. But so I'm saying things that I think. The cost to get there, to me at least, is worth it. Trading, you know, and, and I'm open to the debate, but trading what I believe is somewhere around one point five million on salary more than is otherwise the targeted raise, is worth it versus the sixteen million more we were forecasting. And to get that agreement and to have that kind of a starting point to work forward into the rest of time with the, the association over other blueprint-related matters is helpful. And I think, you know, if I'm them and try to think about it their way, what you're supposed to do as a good negotiator, it's, it's fair. They didn't win. They didn't.
Well, regarding salaries, are we ahead of the power curve at all getting to sixty thousand with the blueprint, as far as the timeline?
We would be a year ahead of, of the requirement if this contract's ratified.
Or a year, we're, we would be a year ahead of the requirement. But many, there are a handful of systems who are already sixty thousand and over. And in my informal conversations with my colleagues, who are also superintendents around the state, they're doing what we're doing, which is, because it doesn't really make much sense to try to, we have to have a career ladder in place for next school year.
Right.
It's very difficult to have that without also having the conversation about the salaries that go with that career ladder. So while we thought we were going to be ahead of the curve, we're probably going to be mostly with the curve.
Just stay competitive and keeping teachers in place.
Basically. And, and I'll also add, and now we're going to talk a little bit about collective bargaining, which sometimes I hear you say you wish we would. You know, try to, so collective bargaining is legal and bilateral. It, we don't, you don't just get to show up and say, this is what you'll get, and you'll be very happy with. We don't, you don't just get to show up and say, this is what you'll get, and you'll be very happy with it. You know, it's, it's, it's a legally binding bilateral process. And so, you know, to adopt the mindset of, well, if you could have done this over two years, you should because it would be cheaper, assumes that the other party in the bilateral process agrees with that and doesn't say, no, if that's how you want to approach it, then I want something different in each of the two years. And so there's sort of a, you know, what's the value of, of this approach versus that approach? And if you can tie up something that we thought might cost another 15 million in a second year for 1.5, let's do it and, and then move forward into the future. We bargain salary every year. This is a multi-year agreement, but salaries open every year. So we'll, and that could be good or bad, but, you know, we're not tying a future base to the base salary. We can't do much about the blueprint requirements that are built into the future. But it's also a tad bit early to try to forecast exactly what that impact's going to be on a year-by-year basis.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Just before we get too far ahead, and I know we see the number there, how it's really huge in the next fiscal year.
Sorry.
It's really important for folks to understand also that we have a major blueprint requirement on the horizon, which is that 60-40 split. And we need to hire additional teachers to cover that requirement. I think it was at the tune of, what, 100 and?
125.
125 teachers. So just to give you a number, 5 million dollars is about 55 teachers. So I don't want you to think that we should rush to just using fund balance to cover because we have other costs coming in the out-years where those funds are going to have to be used to, to provide that expense. So just want to urge caution with the, the notion to just use fund balance and just move on.
So you think using more county operational funds to get us to where that 10.8 million?
I'm not suggesting that. I mean, but bottom line, we will live within whatever means we're given on the school board. At least that'll be my position personally. But I just don't want folks to think that things are going to be rosy next year, and we can just borrow from the fund balance and put it back next year. I just don't want folks to have that, that, that very, very, that very, very wrong perspective.
And historically, on the fund balance, if you look back at past years, it's technology.
Right.
Transportation and not salaries. That's not sound business.
Yeah, it's not sound business to use fund balance.
We've done, we've done some bonuses in the height of the Great Recession years, but I don't remember us doing base salary out of fund balance. I would say to answer some of those questions, and, you know, I, I hope this sounds as respectfully as I want it to and mean it to. One, one conversation you had was, doesn't this conversation come up all the time? I, I would say it comes up when we ask for more money than it's comfortable for you to give. I'd add that, you know, the agreement between the county and the other entities has existed so long that it existed before I've been here, and I don't even think I've ever laid eyes on it. I just know it, somewhere there was an agreement that the Board of Ed could, could maintain a fund balance. I believe so, too, an agreement with the college and an agreement with the library system as well. They never come up. And I believe that's the sticker shock that Dr. Ha, I have presented for years on the Board of Ed's fund balance and why it exists and what it can be for. And my old buddy at the college, now retired, used to say to me, I hate when they ask about your fund balance because someday I might have to come sit beside you and talk about mine. I think it's the amount of money that's always, the amount of money to increase our teacher salaries becomes a sticking point. The amount of money in our fund balance apparently becomes a sticking point. So there is an agreement, which I don't have at my hands. The Board of Ed further has a Board of Ed policy. Our policies bear numbers. I think it's like policy DBDA, which is a direct restatement of a GASB 54 statement on what fund balance should be. And so the general rules are that the operating fund balance should be between 1% and 5% of your total operating budget. Now, our total operating budget is your funding and state funding. At our last audit, we were at 13.1 million, which was 3.1% of the operating fund. So right in the sweet spot of that range. The policy further states that the board must earmark certain amounts of fund balance to cover deficits in key areas. So if we had a healthcare call, if diesel prices were out of hand in one year or utilities were increased in, in a given year, more than we handle, there's an earmark of, I think, a portion of a percent for that. And then any money that should ever accrue above the 5% threshold would immediately be diverted to OPEB, to the OPEB Trust for post-employment benefits. I, I don't remember a year where that's happened since I've been here. That might have happened pre-Great Recession, or, or maybe there was a year that I've forgotten. So that's where it sits right now. We've used, you can see we used it last year, and that money's coming out. Couple more points, to the point that it's, it's money from you, and should it go back to you, it's money from you and the state. It's not money from just you. And so there'd be a whole lot of accounting to figure out there, although the blueprint's going to force us to do that anyway. The, the guidance from the state on the blueprint is we're going to have to account for where the money came from that went into our fund balance and figure out how, when we expended in future years on a one-time basis, it goes back to those purposes. So that ought to be, I hope Mr. Burke and Mr. Sexton are getting real excited about that, hearing that. So that's coming up.
Going back to the fund balance and potentially using it as a bridge to get through, I mean, we can, because I agree with you, don't use it for people, but use it for technology. You know, use it for something.
Right.
As a bridge to get us to next year where it looks like there'll be a lot more money from 1 something to 4 something. You showed us.
So where I would turn would be those two areas that I've mentioned over and over have historically been structurally unsound anyway. And again, I'm not the superintendent or the, or the board who ultimately have to make those decisions. But it's not unusual for us to carry some structural deficits there and try to work through them. I think there's a policy question still to be had on this side of Court Street, Center Street, about, Court Street, about how, how one-to-one is one-to-one. And so for the future, maybe there's some conversation to be had there because that's a large number of laptops to fix and replace. There's a lot of complicating factors to that discussion, but there, there might still be some work to do there from a policy side. And it's not been unusual for us to, to make those kinds of, of structural fixes year by year. And as you know, especially for those of you who've been on the board for a while, anytime we bring a budget transfer or a budget adjustment into a category or between categories, it has to come here for their approval and then across the street for your approval. And so we would detail all of those changes. Where, where we had a little bit of money left over in curriculum materials, and so we're going to apply that money to buy these laptops that we needed to, to, to buy. And so there's, you know, there's kind of, at the end of the day, I guess it's all fund balance, but there's, within a fiscal year, there's your surplus, like what didn't you spend? And I felt like Ted did a really great job the other day of sort of saying, you can't spend, or maybe it was Mr. Kyler. We can't overspend our budget, and so we're always going to be careful not to do that. And so with what's left at the close of a fiscal year, we can move from category to category. That never even becomes part of fund balance because it washes out in that fiscal year. But fund balance is there for those one-time needs. Where, where the board has mostly been using their fund balance consistently in the last four or five fiscal years is to fund the Board of Ed's capital needs that you're not able to fund. And so you do a great job funding our technology infrastructure. That's not the laptops, by the way. That's the wires, the switches, the hubs, the wireless, whatever the wireless things are that connect everybody. That's that hardware infrastructure. And you've done a great job, historically done that. You haven't been able to get to the hardware infrastructure part of our security infrastructure. And so that's an area that, that we have to look at funding.
And let me just add to that quickly. You know, when you look at our technology, and, and again, I'm not talking about laptops. I'm talking about the network, especially the software, everything else. You know, we have 40 different sites plus central office, and we have over 3,500 employees. So oftentimes, people look at our, the cost of our technology, and again, that's sticker shock. But it would be that much for any organization or company that had this many different sites and this many different employees who are using technology and on the network.
Yeah. And so, go ahead, Ms. Curwen.
Well, the fund balance, and a couple of us individually have talked to the other two entities about fund balance, and maybe not as much in Open. And, and I'm glad you mentioned fund balance, and, and, and I think, I think we fully understand it. Something else I'd like you to touch on, and you mentioned it a little bit. We also are looking at the capital side. And very many people say that's where, and I can say you guys, right? That's where you guys hide a lot of money. HVAC goes up someplace and it's 560,000 dollars, and you say, oh, we have extra money at East Middle, which you probably don't, and we can pull that and transfer that. So how does it work in the capital budget, and how does that money get accounted for?
So that, may I, may I make one last concluding thought on fund balance? Because the other place where the Board of Ed is routinely using fund balance is to fund our maintenance program that doesn't rise to the level of the state capital program. So, so Mr. Guthrie, God bless him, who I believe never had a budget as superintendent that he didn't have to reduce. Maybe he got flat one year. One of his last acts in his last year of his term was to reduce the remaining money out of the operating budget that Mr. Prokop, our director of facilities, uses for those things that don't reach the level of a capital project, of roof replacement, HVAC replacement. The superintendent of the board at that time made a conscious decision to say, you know, we need to make that reduction to make that year's operating budget go. We'll deal with that by creating a local capital project called Infrastructure Renewal, I believe. And you have to approve that as well. You, you agreed to set that up. And so periodically, the board has, in a given year, moved X million into that, into that program. And that has become how we operate. So going away from that's not feasible. Something else would have to happen. I think Ray would argue, because he does with me all the time. What I need is not a few million every couple of years, because he has to plan projects. I mean, you know, I need to know what's realistically, so Ray would prefer a set amount every year as opposed to, we'll move another 2 million over there, 3 million over there. So that's the last thing with fund balance. On the capital side, you know, Ms. Kyler, that's a question that I feel like I've only ever been, there was like one moment where I feel like I did a really good job explaining that process in a public meeting, and I probably should have just stepped off the stage that day. It's a complicated process in that there are certain forms and numbers we have to use to start. We, we don't have a choice because it's a partnership between you and the state. And even if the state, there's a rare exception where the state might not participate at all, and we have one here, which often gets referenced. But for the most case, the state will participate, even if they catch it up in an out-year. So if the state were to say to us next year, look, with your full request, we can't fund our share of Freedom Edition, but they'll make it up in, in future funding years. They're, they'll, if they commit, they'll fund their share. But at the very beginning of a project, when it, when it moves from what the Board of Ed calls its, its 10-year plan, its Educational Facilities Master Plan, into just the concept of a project in, in the capital budget. Our planner and Mr., our planner, Mr. Kane and Mr. Prokop, work from a statewide worksheet. And the state basically set, they, they tally the average square foot cost in Maryland for public school construction and say, there's your number. There's your initial planning number. And then if a project moves forward, that number, that budget idea, budget concept, gets tighter and tighter, hopefully. And in years where the, where the construction market wasn't kind of running ahead of us, it was working out pretty well. So if a project moves from just the idea of a project into both agencies, you and, and the IAC at the state are going to participate, then you move into, you might have a feasibility study, but then you'll actually hire architects. So you move from the feasibility study to design documents, to construction documents, with little other iterative steps along the way. And you bring in architects and engineers, and you begin to really refine those numbers to see, you know, what, what would the market suggest right now? There's also the educational specifications built in there, not so much for like a roof or an HVAC, but for space in a school. And that's, that's the folks who occupy the schools telling us in operations, we think the space needs to be this big and do this and that. And we initially build that in, but if the numbers coming back as time goes on would say, that's not a low enough number, then we do some value engineering and/or look at square footage to try to, try to narrow those numbers. But at the end of the day, the number is whatever the construction market says it is when it goes out the bid. And we've had great experience over time. And lately, for some of the systemic projects, we've been bringing, the, the markets a bit ahead of us at all times, and we're, and we're not seeing such a favorable outcome at the bid market. I don't know if that's what you were hoping for, but that's kind of like a from beginning to end thing. We don't get to keep the money. So if you allocate money, well, we get to keep it, but within the capital program. So if you allocate money and the state allocates money, and we have the good years where it costs a little bit less than the budget suggested to build X building or, or project, that money will stay in that project. We like to, for certain projects, we like to keep it there for the warranty time especially. But at the end of the day, if the project's sound and it's moving forward and the warranty's expired, then we work with your folks on an annual basis almost to say, okay, Ted's pretty, pretty good about calling our folks, saying, hey, how much of this could you, could you clean up? So we close out capital projects. And again, those are actions here and at your board, here first and then at your board. They're basically capital budget transfers. And the money remains in the capital budget. It just moves to another project that needs it, or it can move to a future project that Ted's about to recommend to be in. That, that, that's the process there. We don't get to keep the money, and we don't get to use it operationally.
What happens with state money?
The same thing. They, much like with, when I said, you know, Ted'll call and say, hey, could you close this out? We could move this over here. On an annual basis, the state will say, here's some unspent money. What would you like to do with it? But the choices are pretty limited, and it's almost always, apply it to our next year's request, and that tends to be what happens.
But you don't have to give it back.
We don't have to give it back. They're, they're very kind about adding it to the next project in the queue that they're participating in. And that, that happens all the time. That happens almost every year.
When we reviewed the capital budget, we put in the Sykesville Middle and Freedom Elementary, as you're well aware. Can you, you know, you brought up, Steve, you brought up the 60-40, which is obviously a concern, especially with you, because you, I know you've brought it up a few times. How are, again, I'm saying you collectively, looking at the 60-40 and meeting those demands? And then you also have the additional pre-K, which is not part of the numbers. I mean, this is going to be, you know, I won't say death by 1,000 cuts because it's death by one cut right now with that large number. But how are you going to address those coming to us, you know, and also to the state? I mean, are there thoughts?
Well, right now, with the 60-40, what superintendents are, are looking at and, and what we're working with the state and the AIB on is, is, you know, what will, what can count as that 40% planning time? And that has not been set in stone yet. There are many conversations going on around the state about how that, how that can be done. And so until we get a clearer vision on that, it's very difficult for us to plan for the financial implication. When we say to implement it now would be 125 teachers, that's looking at it the way we currently look at planning time. But we're not sure where, where the state is going to land on that and, and what will count as planning time. What part of the day? Will it be teacher's part of the day or the student day? Can it be before students come back to school in the fall? Can it be during, you know, during summer months? We, none of that has been, has been worked through yet.
And ultimately needs to be negotiated. But I will say, and we've talked a little bit about this from where we were a year ago, that there's been some evidence of reasonableness at, at the state level. I think this is an area where there is evidence of reasonableness. So the AIB has issued some additional guidance and had any number of work sessions. But the, the takeaway is that the career ladder is still due on July 1, and we have to show the structure. But there's flexibility even at the state level on implementing those out-year parts. So there's not an immediate, oh, gosh, we got to figure that out. There's, some of the guidance would have us relook at time and how it's defined, and, and ultimately have to do so in collaboration, formal collaboration with CCA. I, I'll tell you, like a takeaway I have from this year's work with them on other things is that that can be done. There's reasonableness there as well, and an understanding that it all has to work somehow. It can't work at all costs. So can't answer much more than that. Pre-K, I would say pre-K is, is an example of, and this is just me, I hope nobody. Pre-K, I would say pre-K is an example of, and this is just me, I hope nobody's listening, where the state, the state hasn't come to the conclusion fully that, you know, like for some people, that's a good idea, a great idea, and maybe it is. But sometimes, a great idea in theory doesn't meet reality. And even if you look at some of the agency bills that were, and they passed, but they passed with heavy, heavy modifications, kind of the state's takeaway was, yeah, there's this dawning realization that these private providers aren't showing up to participate. But their takeaway was kind of like to make the requirements for private providers more like school systems. So, for instance, the one bill would require them to have their own private provider career ladder. I'm not sure that we're quite there yet in the realization that maybe this isn't going to go like we dreamed it would. What we've put in our capital request is what we believe would be necessary to accomplish the original intent of the blueprint relative to the public schools 50% portion of that pre-K requirement. And so, that, you know, that would have to be built out in multiple years over time. I think we're at the design development request stage, and that's pending any other future guidance. And I don't have any reason to think this. Certainly, nothing materialized this year in the General Assembly, and I haven't heard it, you know, even said at an AIB meeting. But my biggest concern has always been what happens when they realize that it's not going to happen in a 50-50 partnership? Do they then just say, then the Board of Ed will make it happen 100%, because that's almost untenable? But there's also space issues with the rest of the 60-40 time component of the blueprint has space issues.
On the 60-40 split, working with the folks in the legislature, there's no appetite for them to go back on that requirement. I mean, we even talked about, look, you have a waiver in process in place for pre-K. Why not 60-40, considering that we don't want to hire more unconditionally certified, you know, conditionally certified teachers or uncertified teachers? But they weren't even willing to entertain a waiver process for that. So, 60-40 is coming whether we like it or not.
It is phased, to Mr. Whistler's point. I think one reason for their reticence to relook at that statewide is, first of all, they're under heavy lobby pressure. But secondly, it's automatically phased in the blueprint, so it's not like 60-40 is all due tomorrow or on July, whatever. It begins its phase in this fiscal year and then works over the course of the blueprint, all of those years that were on the earlier slides with the numbers. And we have to put it in our blueprint plan, and I could tell you loosely, I haven't written that section yet, but, you know, generally, the phase in is going to be that in year one, which is this year coming, we're going to work on getting the career ladder structure we've arrived at in place and work collaboratively. Well, we'll always be working here as staff, but work collaboratively with the association as well to begin to parse that out or figure that out. That's year one. Not, there's no FTE to add there. And I don't even think we have a good enough understanding to begin to loosely throw FTE there yet, anyway.
John, I think the question on the table is, how much of the fund balance would we potentially be willing to use in order to bridge that gap, right, between 6 million and 10.8 million? And understanding that, if you go back to the other chart, the 147 versus the, what was it, 406 or something like that?
437, maybe?
437 in FY '26. So, is the 60-40 the primary component for FY '26?
I honestly don't know, because the career ladder is due now in that yellow year or leading it. And I don't think at the time they drafted this law, they believed they were going to grant flexibility in the career ladder. So, I assume that it had a lot to do with forecasting state budgets and where they were anticipating new revenue sources to show up in terms of casinos and gaming, and how long it might take some of those revenue sources to go. At this point, that's moot, because they're structurally unsound after one more year themselves, and they have to figure that out. I don't know. I truly don't know. And to be honest, I suppose you could do it and see. I've reread the Kerwin Commission policy report, and I reread the funding follow-up, and I don't see a specific trigger there. I have not gone back to try to watch all of the Kerwin Commission meetings to see if it ever came up. That would take hours and hours and hours and hours.
I think if we maintained our policy, which is minimum 1%, you're talking maybe using 7, 8 million of fund balance, and then you're really risking getting below that 1% policy level that we're supposed to be at. But that's just really dangerous territory.
No, no, I completely understand. I'm just looking at this jump from the 146 to the, I'm sorry, 147 to the 437, that that's going to create additional funds next year, right? So, that's a place where you can potentially use fund balances to bridge that gap, right? But if we know that, to your point, Mr. Whistler, in terms of, okay, well, if the 60-40 eats up the vast majority of that jump, because I'm trying to understand how much of the 60-40, if we took a reasonable view right now, I know the guidance isn't complete, it's ever-changing, but if you take a reasonable view, how much does that generate, right? Like the 147 to the 437? How much does that generate? And then how much do we think would be eaten up by the 60-40 the following year? So, we know if there's a, maybe there's a delta of 2 million in there that you could feel comfortable using, right? And that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, that's interesting. That's an interesting concept. The way I view that change in that number is that the first line on this slide, we should anticipate is probably almost three times higher next year than it is this year. So, in terms of unrestricted money that the Board of Ed has somewhat at its discretion, that almost triples, just based on the coding in the law alone, and then that takes the pressure off of what you're asking there. I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't recommend using fund balance to sort of plug the operations. I would make strategic decisions on what here.
Like technology.
As I said before, we've done it. We've gone in past, we've done transportation and technology. And that would be my suggestion right now.
How much?
And I think the way I'm interpreting your questions, Mr. Rustine, is that you put the $6 million placeholder in the budget, right? How do we get to the 10.8 million, right? And the technology is a piece that could be considered one-time. Like, I'm not saying, I'm not saying plug the budget with one-time dollars to cover staffing costs.
Right, absolutely.
But how do we get from the 6 million to the 10.8 million? And if you view that from a technology standpoint, if there's a little bit of excess next year?
And we have, right, we have approximately eight years to get to the 60-40.
Right.
That's not something that we have to get done for next.
Yeah, my question on 60-40 was just a better understanding of the impact, because you bring it up, and I want to understand at some given time, what will be the request coming back to us? I mean, honestly, I like what I'm hearing, that the expectation for next year is that the state will be funding a whole lot more. So, really, you are putting the bandage over the wound, which is significant. You had 6 million, and now, understand, this is a placeholder, the budget, you know, is just amongst us, you know, me and the colleagues, as we draft it. But where would you get that other 10.8, you know, that other 4.8? And that could be covering for technology and transportation. But that's your business. I'm just saying, if we were to get to this, would you be able to use funds to cover requirements that you believe exist?
And I still would want to be cautious with that, too, because, I mean, remember, Carroll County wasn't supposed to drop a penny into blueprint per the state. So, I mean, that's the thing that I worry about. I mean, yeah, that looks great, that the state's supposed to give us more money next year, but who's to say that's actually going to happen?
And can I ask on that note, too, because this is something, I guess, in the simplest possible terms, what does blueprint compliance for FY '25 mean? What has to be accomplished? Is the goal for the school system and the Board of Ed to comply with what is required for FY '25? Is it getting close? Is if it's, so it is to do everything that has to be done for FY '25?
Yes, so next year, we have to have a career ladder, and we have to fund our dual enrollment costs. And that's why we see the 700,000 on the screen for that. What we've decided to do that doesn't have to be done by law next year is get to the 60,000 starting salary and have that salary schedule attached to the career ladder, as I said earlier, because it's very difficult to negotiate a career ladder with our association without looking at the salaries that will go with that. And again, our colleagues are doing that all across the state right now, and we can't fill our teacher positions. So, we have to do something about that now to, you know, to plug the hole, basically.
So, in the coming years, do you foresee that you're going to be able to comply with everything the blueprint requires? And I ask this because knowing a lot of the discussion today and a lot of discussions that we've had in the past about the changing guidance and the different measurements by how they want to determine whether blueprint has been implemented, you know, is there at any point where you feel that over, in the coming years, you will be fully complying with blueprint? Or is the intent always to get as close as possible? And the reason why I'm asking that, too, is because there's that threat from the state to withhold education funding. There's the threat from us to withhold tax revenue distributions. And so, what I'm getting at is if we do not have it in our power ultimately to comply with everything the blueprint wants us to do, is the potential loss in revenue from the state something that all of us together can deal with and overcome?
No.
Oh, 5%.
So, on that note, then, on that note.
Or more, right, you can't.
All right, well, I'm going to cause trouble, then. I'm going to ask this question. On that note.
You go right ahead.
And I think you probably know where I'm going to go with this, right? So, on that note, is it worth it attempting to comply with blueprint or simply saying to the state, go take a hike, we're going to do what we can do as we can do it?
I think we've seen, I think as we've had conversations with the state, we've seen more reasonableness and a desire to work with districts on making sure that we can be in compliance. And that isn't something that we were seeing even last year at this time. So, I think that the state wants to see the blueprint work. They don't want to see the blueprint fail. And so, we've gotten more of a partnership with the state on that. And so, I think we will be able to comply over time. And I think as we communicate more and more regularly with the state about where we are, what we're doing, and this is what our plans are, we're going to get feedback along the way. It isn't going to be like, all of a sudden, you know, they say, oh, you're not in compliance. We have to turn in yearly plans, and we get feedback on those plans. And so, I think we can get there. But I think, as I said before, this year is going to be the hardest.
It's a real, they have really been, it's been a workable relationship, especially with that new liaison person, which has really helped a lot. I think down the road, when they think about 60-40 and preschool, if we need 125 teachers and we're a small county, where is Baltimore County, Howard County, Montgomery County going to get all these teachers? As I said today, there were very few educators there at that symposium. And it is going to be not only our problem, but it's going to be a state problem, and we're really going to all have to work together to manufacture these new teachers. And it's not working. I have never seen in my life VisAid teachers quit in the middle of a year when years ago they were all dying to kill each other to get into that position. And when I left, there was four or five people waiting in line on a silver platter to take my spot. And when they leave in the middle of the year, and it's not only educators, it is also administration and guidance counselors. They've had enough. And this is amazing to me. And I think that's, not only is it going to be the money, but is where are we going to find all these educators to fill all these compliances? I think they're going to have to rethink some of this going down the line. The 60-40 and preschool. We are not going to be able to do this unless we work hand in hand. And I think they see that now.
And I worry that if you don't, are not in compliance, what the state will do?
So, that's.
Then to come in and take over us, then to come to you and say, we're going to handle your budget now.
So, that's, that.
My worry is, oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear.
Turn your hair and ate up.
Well, my worry is, they're not going to, they're going to be flexible. As Mr. Whistler said, there's no appetite to change the law. The chart and the 147 and next year's money, is that part of the law?
Yeah.
Monday in Annapolis, I asked about tobacco tax. I asked about a couple of things. Lobbyists, delegates, and senators all had the same answer. That 70 to 90 million is a Band-Aid. Nobody in this town realizes we can't afford this yet. So, what's going to happen when they wake up?
My big concern.
And they can't afford it? Are they going to say, get it local? Or are they going to start being more flexible?
Amen to your concern. Some of the things that really disturbed me in the May legislative sessions this year was the immense amount of talk of the state legislature changing the MOE formulas for counties. I think the biggest risk you guys face on your side of the table is the state saying, yeah, today you contribute 60% of blueprint, and as they march down this blueprint road, they're going to realize, wow, it's super expensive. So, now, Carol, not 60%, but you're doing 65%. That's the major risk I see for you folks down the road.
Yes, so this issue of compliance is key. Commissioner Vigliotti's question is key. When we really know what compliance looks like and we actually know what penalties look like, this board needs to know. Because I'm not as optimistic, when I watch some of the language coming out of the General Assembly this year, I'm not optimistic about the future when you have people who are running committees within the House of Delegates and the Senate are saying that counties are going to have to make sure they pay their quote-unquote "fair share" for blueprint. And I just found comments like that to be outrageous. So, I'm not optimistic, but this issue of what's the penalty? What's the cost? When we actually know what those are, when we know those tangible penalties, when we know what it's really going to cost us if we don't meet the quote-unquote "moving mark", which seems to me to be a goalpost that's constantly moving, this board definitely needs to know. I mean, what I did want to do is step back just real quick. I mean, everybody, obviously, on the board and hopefully within the county understands the revenue situation with the county. We're looking at $19 million less than was forecasted for FY '24. And everyone's also aware of the fact that we've got this fledgling fire department with people and equipment and things like that that we've got to fund. And we still have a lot of ways to go in taking care of our public safety people, whether it's fire department, EMS, or police force. There's a lot of gaps there that this board, I know, would love to fill in terms of compensation and disability and workers' comp, and, God forbid, things that are worse than that. So, the question is, how are we going to pay for this? And it's not a rhetorical question. If we can't find some way to use the money that's available to us, is the board willing to endorse tax increases to meet that mark? I mean, that's a legitimate question that we're having to grapple with. I understand, the buck stops with the board accounting commissioners. I completely understand that. But I'm hoping we can find some means to work with things here. Maybe there is a, I wouldn't call it the light at the end of the tunnel, but, you know, with the next year's funding per pupil, maybe things get a little bit brighter. So, unless we're willing to endorse tax increases on people, I'm hoping we can come up with some sort of solution for this year. Because certainly, I oppose them, but I'm hoping the board feels the same way. And again, I understand blueprints, not an easy mark to make. It is, to me, mostly unreasonable requirements coming down from the state to the counties. And it's particularly egregious for our county, because I thought we already had a great school system, and we still do. And to Ms. Pataglia's point, they did tell us at one point, we didn't need to do anything, but I guess that doesn't matter anymore.
Exactly. Well, to your question, I think what Sheriff Dewey said the other day to you guys was perfectly stated. You know, I mean, I myself, as an individual, I think I've talked to most of you about the idea I had. I can't speak on behalf of the board. I can only speak for myself. My property tax value is 300,000, so we pay maybe $3,000 a year. My family's willing to pay $300 more. That adds up. If everybody chipped in equally, it adds up, and it helps. And those services are needed in this county. I mean, we're creating a product. Our children are a product.
And Tara, just to be clear, if we were to go back to the three cents in property tax that changed in 2011? that changed in twenty-eleven or somewhere around there, your property tax would really, because it's three hundred thousand dollar value, would probably go up around a hundred and twenty dollars a year, not three hundred dollars. So that's even better for you.
Well, even if it's, it's something extra that goes towards it. But like Sheriff Dewey said, I mean, we have services here in this county. We, we want safety. We want our children to be educated and to be the best in the state. And if every household has to chip in a couple pennies a day to have that done, as an individual, I'm all for it. Do it. We do have people moving here from other counties that don't pay anywhere near property taxes what they used to have to pay. It's nowhere close.
Kind of a question, but, um, what he said is hair over ten dollars a month? You spend more now at Starbucks.
Yes, I do.
Dr. McCabe, I'm curious, um, I, I have a lot of faith, I have a lot of faith in you. And I think people are worried about blueprint. How many times have you guys submitted to the committees on blueprint? And how have you done? Have you been questioned that you're not in compliance?
Um, we've been, we've submitted twice. And, um, and our plans have been, um, have been approved both times without any changes needing to be made. Um, and I think that's in part because, um, of the facilitator we have working with us from the AIB. And he's done a great job of being able to go back and communicate with them about where we are, where, where our obstacles are and, and what we're trying to do to overcome them. Um, John, do you wanna add-
Dr. McCabe, if, if I may, um, I'm gonna grandstand for a second, but basically saying the comments where, you know, we, we were on this early, both you as a superintendent and us as a board, understanding the implications of the blueprint and how this was gonna impact us and the funding was not sufficient. We were on it very early. We were screaming from every mountaintop. And when it was just Carroll County screaming from the mountaintop, there wasn't a whole lot of listening, right? Um, and, and you, you as a Board of Commissioners did the same, right? You really supported us in that. You understood it. And you went to bat at, at your meetings as well. Um, but recently, other counties are coming to the same recognition. And now that's when the state is saying, "Okay, now that you have other counties, like some of the bigger counties complaining of the same things that we've been saying, um, for three years now, now they've been saying it for a year", that's where the state is coming in and saying, "Okay, we recognize there's some issues. We need to be reasonable. We need to provide some flexibility." So I, I agree with everything that we're doing and our, and our process forward, but I also think that our mantra needs to be, what flexibility will we be afforded and use that flexibility to the maximum extent possible?
And that is extremely important.
Really well said. And, um, 'cause I, I do wanna get back, you know, 'cause Commissioner Garen asked a question to all of you, so I wanna get back to that. But, but your comment, uh, makes a lot of sense. We were at Mako last summer and we were talking about this. There was standing room only. I don't know if you were in the room or not.
Yeah, I was.
It was standing room only and every county was in there, from Montgomery County to Prince George, all of them. It wasn't designed that way. It was designed for the rural counties. And the rural county said, "You know, if we're gonna make an impact, we gotta get the big boys and girls in the room as well." And they were in the room. And they all said the exact same thing, that they cannot afford the price tags that are being put on them. You know, whether, you know, Montgomery County said, "We need to go up ten cents" or whatever it may be, but they were looking at this daunting, you know, concerns. And you're right. So then that caused all of us to write a letter with all twenty-four signatures to the state saying, "We cannot do this." Right after that meeting, maybe in the same day, I was in a board meeting with Mako and the governor was there. And he said, "Listen, blueprint's gonna occur. It's not about quantity, it's about quality. So if we have to push it to the right in order to get the quality necessary, then we need to do that by design. I just need to understand, I being him, need to understand what will it take to do that? So the focus is on quality. So it doesn't surprise me when, you know, you ladies say that you're getting better dialogue from AIB and all the others, um, down the state, because I think that's the direction they're given, is it's about quality. Um, so that's, to me, favorable, hearing that, uh, that it's coming down that way. But, um, I'd like, you know, I know Tara, you-
And I think with the, with the, the answer we just heard, I'm comfortable, the state's not gonna hold your money. I'm comfortable, as, as long as we work with you, they're not gonna hold our income tax. So now, how do we fund you to get through this?
Right.
So going back to what Commissioner Garen, 'cause I know we talked when you presented, I think-
And she did give the answer.
And I did, you know, speaking for myself, um, you know, I said, you know, I think my words were something like, you know, "At some point, the community expects a minimum level of service. And in Carroll County, people are here for great schools and safe streets. And at a minimum, that's what we need to provide." Um, now, asking you to raise taxes or, or, you know, asking, you know, answering that question would, would, would be kind of like me asking you, "How can I raise achievement scores?" Okay, uh, you know? So what I can say is, as an individual, as, as an educator, I don't know how you continue to give the level of service. I know I can't continue to give the level of service that our parents and students are used to in the school system without the funding that I'm requesting, um, now and over, over the next, um, handful of years. So, you know, that's, that's all I can say for myself. And I think you have to make the decision and the, and the, the people who live in this county have to make the decision of, you know, what are they going to expect, uh, from their local government?
Right.
And Commissioner Garen, I, I completely appreciate your question and, and your thoughts, um, around that. I guess, I, I might take a slightly different view on some of this. I, I would look at it as, um, you know, we, the, the question is like, do we wanna increase our tax rates, right? Like, I would say, okay, revenue is gonna naturally increase over time due to increased property values and, um, inflation and things like that. And so, so I would say that the school system has been a growth engine for the county over the last several years, right? Like, so that growth in revenue, I think we, uh, I'm, I'm gonna be very not humble at the moment and say, I think that we've, we've really, um, contributed to that significantly, right? Like, families are moving to Carroll County. Th- this is a great place to live. It's safe. It's got great schools. The way that we handled things during the pandemic, I think, really brought, we made good decisions in favor of our students and their, their achievement levels. And it brought families to our county. So I think that we really were a growth engine for this county with the way that we handled things. And as revenue continues to increase, I think that we, we deserve a good chunk of that revenue increase. Talking about increasing tax rates, um, that's a different story. Um, and if it's to fund blueprint, I, I, I guess I completely oppose increasing local tax rates in order to fund blueprint, just because at the outset of blueprint, um, the state was saying, you know, "Carroll County, they're doing their fair share." Um, that you, the locals aren't supposed to have to put in significantly additional funds. And now they're kind of reneging on that. And I would say that the state needs to pay their fair share. And we need to use, utilize every bit of, of ideas in our arsenal in terms of, okay, what is the flexibility that the state is gonna allow? Like, we, we've been having these great dialogues with the AIB. And they have come to at least some realization that there needs to be flexibility. There needs to be reasonableness here. So I think that we need to push the envelope on that in order to bridge the gap, right? Like, let's not jump right to the be-all, end-all blueprint requirements. Let's say, "Look, like, okay, we can't get all the way there. We can get to here." Will that work for the state? Will the state accept that?
Completely agree. And I will tell you, to make, and to add insult to injury, if we raise taxes and we are forced because of blueprint to shift many of our teachers to thirteen or fourteen compensatory ed schools, you're gonna have people say, "Wow, you raised my taxes and you increased my class sizes." That's just unbelievably unacceptable to me. We really-
But this is not about blueprint. This is not about blueprint. This is partially about the schools, partially about the ten point eight million. In addition, that you came to us wanting, not wanting, but requesting. It's about, well, we talked about the fire EMS. It's about, uh, continuing of services in our county. But to tie this to one thing, and you're right, it probably is unfair to do it this way, but, you know, we are collecting information from our leadership and that's who you are. But if it was tied to a thing like blueprint, absolutely. Because there's light at the end of the tunnel with that matrix that's showing on the, on the screen. I'm looking, you know, for your thoughts well above blueprint. So, you know, that's at least my two cents about this. This is, it's not one thing. It's-
Speaking personally-
But in fairness, it's most-
Whatever budget you send us.
Say again?
I will work, I will work to make sure we live within the means of whatever budget we're sent.
Then I've gotta ask, why did you vote for the budget and request more than you wanted? I've gotta ask that in public.
Because of what blueprint required. Um, and I will tell you, we had, at least from my perspective, extremely spirited debate on especially the compensation piece. And, and, um, again, the major thing that we exceeded this year was getting to sixty thousand a year early. But, um-
But the blueprint was only a fraction of that ten point eight, is what you shared, I thought. Maybe not, maybe I'm missing it. I thought blueprint was only a piece of that ten point eight that you voted to bring across the street as a request. No?
Well, negotiated agreements, that, that nineteen million dollar chunk, that, that's with the career ladder. That, that's really the biggest chunk of it. And that's associated with the blueprint. It's not a blueprint mandate per se, but-
The getting to sixty thousand a year in advance is what I was saying. It, to my math, is about a one point five million dollar, um, cost that wouldn't, wouldn't be there if, um, we were just giving a five percent and stuff to our employees. But that assumes they would have settled, you, you know what I mean? That assumes that that would have been the outcome of bargaining, that we would have all said, "We'll just worry about sixty thousand the year after, whatever the difference is, and we won't ask for more than whatever we need to get there." So what I was trying to state was, you know, above what we're, we're considering, the, the raise that all of our employees have gotten and now hopefully will get, it's about a one point five million dollar additional cost that is, that I'm tying to blueprint because that's the difference to get to the structure to include sixty thousand. But I'm also-
Than doing fifteen?
I'm also suggesting it's cheaper to do it all at one time and move forward than it would have been to try to negotiate.
So one point five of the ten point eight?
One point five of the nineteen point two.
So, so, so again, the ten point eight above what's already in our budget, what is the requirement to us to then work with? Is it ten point eight? Is it nine point two? Is it zero? I mean, there's lots of different ways we can look at this. Um, I mean, is it living within the means of zero? Or is it living within the means of ten point eight? I mean, we, we've got to get somewhere sooner rather than later. And I wanna make sure we do it the right way.
I'll frame it and then, so ten point eight pays for everything on this slide. Less than ten point eight, the Board of Ed has to do the process, I feel like we were talking about earlier, of figuring out, okay, what, what, we, we don't have revenue to do all of these things, so how are we gonna handle these things? And that's where we had all the conversation about technology, chasing special ed, um, dual enrollment.
So I think if we could get, if we could get seven over the original, um, six that you had, had stated, or seven that you had stated, we could actually deal with, um, the transportation and the technology with fun.
I'm gonna cut, but that's what you've talked about in the boardroom.
I, I wanna get a collective understanding, you know, as we're moving forward.
Well, to be fair, we spent most of the afternoon talking about blueprint. So I look at blueprint as being the major cause of these issues. But the reason I asked the question wasn't to put anybody on the spot. It was to really sort of conceptualize the fact that we've gotta work something out. Because as my fellow commissioners, I think, are getting the message across, we don't have the money. So that's what this is all about. And-
Right, right now, if we give you zero, we still have a budget problem. So it's not all about blueprint. And, and I'd like to share, I won't say where or whom. I was in a room last night with twenty people. Wow, half a dozen of them individually own more property than this total room. And I talked about two of their budget things, which were five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And they wanted them, wanted them. And I said, "How do we do it?" And they go, "Raise taxes." And I said, "You own more property than I dream about. Raise taxes." And, and, uh, when, when I hear that and when I hear somebody in the middle is gonna pay a hundred and thirty dollars a year, um, I can't fill my Tahoe up with gas twice for that amount. Um, which ain't Carroll County's fault. We can get into politics. But, but, um, I, I don't understand when we haven't raised taxes since nineteen ninety-seven, how we think-
Two, two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven income tax. Income tax two thousand seven, property tax nineteen ninety-seven. Um, that we just think inflation's gonna keep us up. And, and I think everybody needs to understand, let's say my, I, I think I'm two years away from assessments. My assessment goes up fifteen percent, um, which is inflation. I only have to pay five percent of that next year. It's phased in.
I think people need to realize too, like, I mean, realize too, like, you know, if my family pays three thousand dollars a year in property taxes to the county, so let's say fifty percent of that goes to the school system, is fifteen hundred dollars really gonna make a dent in the school system? No, that's not even, that's not even a part of a teacher's salary whatsoever. But if you go to Hanover, people are paying out of pocket outside of that five thousand dollars a year to their school system separately from their property taxes and everything else. But they're leaving Carroll County and going up there and doing that.
Yeah, up, up in Hanover, you guys get to raise taxes. We wouldn't be asking you that question.
Well, that'd be great. But I mean, I'm saying is like, you know, we have people moving from other counties here paying much, much less, but we have people from Carroll County leaving and going to Hanover to buy a house much cheaper. And they're willing to pay the five thousand dollars a year in school tax, just alone.
Yep.
And they see the difference.
It's tough. It's emotional. And, and, uh, I, I was shocked last night because I thought, you know, if I owned that value of property, I'd say, "Don't touch me."
Hi, um, uh, hello there. Um, while I can't speak in numbers, I can speak holistically. I can't speak for anyone else, but what I know about students and what I know about Carroll County is that we have an amazing school system, not just because of what our board has done, but because there are some amazing students here that are working incredibly hard, that are incredibly gifted in all aspects, in all special fields. And our, our children are our future. I mean, I, I think so clearly that we want, we spoke earlier about how we want students in Carroll County to grow up to wannabe teachers in this community once more. And I just think that if all of us are willing to pitch in as a community to support that future, I, I believe that it's the best decision because it's gonna make us wanna come back here. I mean, if you've ever spoken to a student, their first answer for what they wanna be when they grow up is most likely not gonna be a teacher. And I don't think that's necessarily the greatest thing 'cause when I do hear a student say that they wanna be a teacher in the future, it's, it's incredible to me because they wanna come back here if they do. But for most students, they don't. And I think as a community, we all know that your students are the future. And funding that and possibly as a community pitching in, as you had said before, to fund the future that will be here and that will continue to be here and grow our schools and our workforce outside of our schools. That's truly what we wanna do.
Thanks.
And Kenny, I, as speaking for President of the Board, we've worked really hard to work with CCA to do the career- work with CCA to do the career ladder and our salaries. Okay? All five voted for, for the budget. In order to make that work, 7.7 million's the number, because, and the 1.5 or 8 million extra this year versus 15 next year is a no brainer. And I understand, we have unfunded mandates, we have EMS, we have fire. There was no money for that either. When I started, I think when Don and I ran for our first term, there was 130,000, 140,000 people in Carroll County? Something like that?
No, 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 no.
Okay, about 170, okay.
Voters.
Yeah, we're-
Okay. Things, you know, but they like these services. So, you know, we have been working with, we've been working, Don and I've been working with you all for, this is our eighth year. And we've got a great working relationship. And we have to continue to work together. And you all are in charge of taxes, but we need to work together and work as a group. You know, it is what it is. And I think people need to understand what is going on in the county. We need fire and EMS, as I said before. When I taught at North Carroll in my first 10 years there, there were two sets of kids. They either went out to the farm and worked, or they went to Hampstead Fire Company and hung out. That is no more. You do not see that. Okay? So I understand that there are enough, there are not enough volunteers. We have to take care of the sheriff and safety. That's one of our big sales. We are your best advertisement to come to Carroll County, is our school system. The next thing is that it is safe, and we have a lot of open land. We have agriculture. So we, as a group, need to work together.
And the other problem we have, Mr. Vignette said it well, you guys attract families here. Unfortunately, they can't buy a house right now. You know, we got to, we got to do something about the housing market and what's going on in Carroll County. It's, it's, blueprint isn't our biggest problem.
Right.
I wish it was.
No. But, you know, I support the Board of Education. We have a great educational system. And I hope you support us and help these teachers. I was a teacher. It's not an easy job. And it's more difficult now, and especially since pandemic. It is not easy, because I did substitute. I saw the behavior in the classrooms. And it is not, it's difficult. But we need your help. And, and we need to make sure that we can give it. Produce the best, the best product. I don't like tax increases either. I'm an old Carroll County girl, you know? And I do have-
Oh, me too.
Yeah. So I know where we're coming from. You know, I don't like taxes increased. And that's why, you know, and that we hear that.
And this has been great, and we could keep talking. Do you guys have a meeting?
Yes.
I have one quick question, though. I want to go back to, circle back to what two of my colleagues did ask today. And it's a question that Commissioner Rothstein did ask Dr. McCabe and a number of the other leaders in our community. I know a couple of you have answered, but I'd like to hear from the rest of you. Where do you stand on taxes? I know it's on us as the Board of County Commissioners, but I think in complete fairness, which I don't really like that word typically, I think we objectively need to know where all of you stand, because we've, as Commissioner Rothstein has done, we've been asking that to everybody. So personally, I'm just asking, where do you all stand on that?
I've already given my response. I'm not in favor of it. Again, we should still keep working the state side of it. And, you know, if we can use part of fund balance, or at least other buckets to stem the tide, great. But we will live within the means that you give us. And if that means going back to refiguring our budget, that's what we'll do. That's my perspective.
Personally speaking, I'm not going to share with you how you could or should do your jobs. I mean, because certainly taxes winds up being your responsibility. Our job certainly is to share with you what our needs are. And I think we've been very clear with it. And again, we keep going over and over again. We do need to support the budget that's being presented. It's already been laid out for the multitude of reasons that have already been explained. So again, I am a citizen, a longtime citizen here in Carroll County. And, you know, my family certainly do our part. We do support strong education. And, you know, we will do what we have to do to make sure that we have continued strong education. But again, you know, just hear me clearly that, again, I am not going to share that, you know, you should or you shouldn't raise taxes. That's really going to be, you know, you've seen us struggle with blueprint and all the other issues that we have. So I know it's a struggle for you, you know, in dealing with the taxes. I think what happens, you know, you, you try to please people. We all know that you can't please all the people all the time. So, you know, the ball is going to be in your park on that one with the taxes. And, you know, you'll make some people happy, and some people will certainly be glad to support it for a myriad of reasons, and other people you'll, you'll have upset. Just know that I support our education budget and our education request. I feel that it's needed for all the reasons that we've shared earlier.
The request that was presented.
Pardon?
The request that was presented.
Yes.
And the principal just came out, and your first words were, you need to do your jobs.
Well, don't shy away from it. You know, do what you have to do.
Well, I don't exactly pay taxes yet, but-
Don't be in a rush, don't be in a rush to do that either. But I know you've got a, you're probably eager to get out there and start working.
Marcia, you had said during part of your comments that you threw out a dollar amount that was needed to hit the negotiated agreements.
Yes, I'm afraid if we don't, we are not going to be able to meet that negotiated agreement. And then we're going to have to go backpedal. And then we, it's, I don't want to do that, because I don't want to, well, whoever's next year is going to end up spending $15 million more. So-
So that's, that's 7 million?
But that was the, was that the $7 million number?
Yeah, right.
So 7 plus 7, right? So 7 of the 10.8, right?
Yes.
So, just kind of giving you a baseline for what is needed to fund that piece of it, right, to save the 15 million for next year, right?
Yes.
But the rest of it?
And use fund balance for whatever we have to do, and make cuts. I mean, I've got to, we all have a job to do. And we need to educate our students. And we're not getting the teachers we used, we used to get. We are not getting the first person-
Right.
-on the scale anymore.
Right.
We're not getting number two. We're getting three and four and non-certified. We cannot continue to do that and keep our academic numbers where they are. You know, they need mentoring. They need a lot of professional development. And they're not getting it. And that's, it's, that is just the way it is right now.
One question, yeah, sorry. If, if we do six or seven million, if we meet in the middle of someplace, what are you going to, we've talked about one plus five years, et cetera. What are you going to ask for next year? Are you comfortable at all with next year? With the charts we saw and whatever we saw, or not really?
Am I comfortable that we're going to get that from the state next year? Yes.
And you think that'll, that and the 3% from us, you're going to be okay? I'm not putting you on the spot.
Not at all. Got to get it over the hump.
I think we need to work to meet that and use every bit of flexibility that we can that is, that is given by the state. Like, I think, I really do think we need to push the envelope on that flexibility.
Because if, if we do something for revenue, which as you can see, we're still beating each other up and talking about it.
And I understand that. You're in a difficult situation.
There's no way we can do it again.
I understand that.
It's, we need to do it again in another 25 years, like's happened before.
Right. No, I understand that. Well-
And I think it's incumbent upon us, I mean, the question was asked and not necessarily answered, about how much of fund balance would we feel comfortable using? I think that that's a, that's a debate that we need to have.
Yes.
Right? Amongst ourselves of where-
I think so. Honestly, I think, I think you're correctly right. And sooner rather than later, as we're moving forward, so.
Well, and those parameters are set for us.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we need to keep doing the quarterly meetings. We need to keep communicating. And I always say this, one of the reasons I love Carroll County is because all the different entities work together. We might not all agree, but we all work together.
We do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for hosting.
Yep.